All right. Call a meeting to order at 6 o'clock for the December 6, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. Hello, everyone. I am Chair Stephanie Slush. All the way to my far right, I have alternate Chair Jimmy Tar. To my immediate right, I have our newest member with his first meeting with us tonight, Doug Finn. To my left, I have John Jeffress, and to the far left, I have Lee Bell. Janelle Franklin is our Assistant Town Planner, and Ashton Weagle is our Administrative Assistant. The first item on the agenda, as always, is public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone who's here in person or virtually, who would like to speak to anything that's not on the agenda for tonight. Now would be the time for you to come up to the mic and speak. Are you here for an agenda item? Okay, cool. All right. We can close the public forum then, considering there's no one else here for that, and move on to formal discussion to review an A and R application, which stands for Approval Not Required, at 186 North Hatfield Road. Is that what you're here for? Great. Do you mind sitting just to the front? Just so the mic can catch it. Yeah, if you want to introduce yourself.
All right, so I am Matt Seacard. I'm an employee of Harold Eaton Associates Land Surveyors. Randall couldn't make it today. He had a prior engagement, so he sent me to present the plan for 186 North Hatfield Road. We're going to divide it between the frontage and the railroad tracks, and cut that part out and separate it from the rest of the land, which also has frontage over on Straits Road.
Great. Yes, it seems like it's a pretty cut and dry. It has lots, plenty of frontage for this.
Yeah.
It says 500, almost 506 feet of frontage on North Hatfield Road. You're looking to subdivide it into about 3.1 acres, and that's what's the whole portion from the railroad tracks to North Hatfield.
Exactly.
The only question I do have, if you could clarify, so there's right-of-way, right? Like, the idea-
That says "not in favor" of that property.
Yes, can you describe that?
So that is actually for the abutter to the north. And it's, I believe, to access the back parcel that we show. There's two parcels there to the north. So we just wanted to show that, to show that it wasn't in favor of Holic crossing the tracks.
Okay, so is there access to that back parcel to the whole-ish property?
I believe there is some kind of crossing there, based on the aerial view, but it is not anything spelled out specifically. So I believe it's probably not in use now that Amtrak goes through there, and there's no whistle for it. But I don't know the exact status of that.
Yeah, I just, the only thing that I, you know, I'm thinking about with having this whole parcel is owned industrial-
Yep.
Is, is it like industrial? I'm pretty sure it's industrial, right? That any future board or any development, really, that on that back half of the parcel, the parcel from the railroad tracks to Straits Road-
Right, yep.
I'd imagine that, whether we're here or another future board is here, you know, I'd imagine that we, there would be a want to have the use coming in and out of that part of the parcel from North Hatfield Road.
Okay, well, my understanding is that the current owner wants to divide the house from the other parcel-
Correct.
And sell that house to someone else.
Yes, I understand that. I'm just curious. I just wanted to know if there was an easement then, or right-of-way to that back part of the parcel.
Not in that, it's spelled out in the deed that we are just subject to the Connecticut River. It's a very old deed. So I don't have any information on anything new. We did not show anything on there, so I do not believe there is any access spelled out specifically.
Okay. I just, you know, I'm just concerned.
It seems like it's an old easement here that's, you know, even outside their perimeters of control, even.
Right, so that's the one that you're saying is not in favor of Holic? That's for accessing the butter's property. The butter has nothing to do with this.
And it has nothing to do with the railroad. I believe it's there just to get from that front parcel to the back parcel. And I think they were, at one time, in separate ownership. And we just put it on there to basically show that we're not trying to access across the tracks. That we're showing it, that there's a right-of-way there, but it's not for the Holic.
Right, I understand. I just hope that the, you know, that the current owner understands that then, you know, development and stuff would be using Straits Road versus North Hatfield Road. Is that-
That was our intent with putting Straits Road on there, was showing that the frontage was on Straits Road, and that we were not trying to jump between the two parcels, and we were separating this frontage with this parcel, and leaving the frontage on Straits Road with the remaining land. So the railroad, our intent is to have the railroad keep the two properties separate.
If I may?
Yes.
Are you aware of a legal crossing to the railroad?
No.
Okay. Are you aware of any impediment along the boundary on Straits Road that would prevent access to the 24.8 acre parcel from Straits Road? There's no cliff edges or easements or anything like that?
Nope, nope, that's mine own.
Any sort of future potential development might come, there might be some more difficulty if you're trying to access it from the Straits Road as opposed to trying to access from North Hatfield Road. That's kind of what I'm, suggest, want the landlord to potentially know, but that's-
I can't speak-
Yep.
-to their intent. I can only say what is on the plan. And as far as I know, they're not trying to do, they're going to deal with that down the road as a separate parcel, and that'll be their issue to bring it back to you, and the time comes.
Fair. I just wanted to, you know-
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Any other questions, then?
No.
Yeah, that's going north. Yeah.
Right. This looks like the Straits Road is on that side.
Exactly.
Yeah, this is like the pub, or that house.
Yeah.
So it looks like there was an old informal crossing of the tracks before the high-speed.
Right, well bef-, yes, that's my understanding of it.
Yep, I mean, I'm just saying, it's zone industrial. There could very much be some, you know, something big that could, in the future, come, and again-
Yeah, no, I understand where you're coming from, so.
As long as the, you know, that's not, pass that along, I guess, to the owner. It's just a-
For them.
Yeah, that's no problem.
That that could limit some of that, but not like in a legal way, but just in a neighborhood, dealing with the neighborhood kind of way.
Yeah, yeah.
And just, you know, looking at the zoning right there, this property and the property immediately to the north are zoned industrial, even though every other property along West Road, 5 and 10, are light industrial. And all the properties, basically, to the south of the Straits Road side is, I assume, agriculture.
Yeah.
Residential, agricultural, rural residential. So it's weird that there's that island.
Oh, there's a lot weird. Welcome to Hatfield zoning. There's a lot weird.
No, okay, yeah. Okay. So that's, that's another conversation.
Makes sense.
So, yeah, that's, you know, I've said, but-
Yep, no, I understand exactly where you're coming from.
And also understand that this is completely a reasonable thing to, and we're going to sign off on it, and just making that simple.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions otherwise?
I make a proposal that we accept as A and R as presented to the board.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming.
Um, are you guys going to sign it later, and I'll, we can come back and pick-
Yeah, we'll sign it at the end of this, at the end of tonight, which we only have, it could be in like a half an hour, or you can have someone pick it up probably tomorrow.
I'll hang out for a little bit, then, if you guys don't mind an audience.
Nope.
Yeah, I don't think we have to-
I think it'll just make my life easier, because I'll probably be the one coming to pick it up.
Fair enough.
If you had a Sharpie, you could hand it down as we were going.
I know, that's true, yeah. We just have to make sure we sign the same line all the way through. And these two. We'll sign them now, then. We can walk and chew gum at the same time, right, guys? Okay.
Sometimes.
The next item on the agenda is the Hatfield Design Guidelines Review. This isn't, Doug, I'm not sure how much you've been, have caught up on this part of the agenda.
Not at all, unfortunately.
That's great. So I get an opportunity to talk to the public about it again, too. We, our zoning bylaws reference Hatfield Design Guidelines multiple times, especially when it comes to, like, commercial properties and how we want them to give a look and feel similar to what aligns with Hatfield's character. However, we've never passed them, even though our zoning bylaws reference them multiple times. And so now that we have our wonderful, very part-time Assistant Town Planner, she was able to help us get this article to town meeting warrant in May for us to finally pass these. I'd imagine, we've been kind of like discussing them, and then anticipation of having a public hearing on them, probably at the next meeting, and that's what we're going to discuss now. And, but they were in our last packet full of stuff, but we can get them back to you. Yeah, sorry. And Janelle, do you, we want, do you want to take the lead on this?
Yeah, so for the design guidelines, we had some discussion last meeting about whether or not we thought it was worthwhile to include language about keeping, like, character traits of like old village New England in new developments. Personally, my recommendation is to keep that language, because I feel like that is what people in Hatfield want, especially around Main Street, but perhaps relaxing restrictions around 5 and 10, and maybe not restricting development as much for design, at least, over there.
Right, so that, yeah, I guess, like, a history of, it's a pretty long document. And, and they are just guidelines. So it's kind of like the, we can get, we want to also make it easy on applicants and by having like this very long, I don't know how many pages, I forget, like, isn't it like 20 pages?
Yeah.
20-page thing, with pictures, though, so it is helpful in some ways with pictures. Is that the right thing? And then, like, how do you tackle streamlining that, and if we do or not, so. And, yeah, one of the outcomes at our last meeting was like, do we want the same guidelines for the whole town? Or do you say, like, certain parts or certain zones follow different guidelines? It's kind of like where we were landing.
I think one of the biggest problems that I-
We need to stamp it. Don't you need to stamp it?
Oh, yeah, Burke has to do that. Okay. Sorry.
That's all right.
Should have thought about that.
That's all right. So I'll, you can email Randy or myself when it's ready, and we'll come pick it up.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot for coming.
Yep.
I think, I think one of the biggest issues I run into with this, you know, just the document in itself and its application to Hatfield is the diversity that we have in town. We have a historic center that is a historic center, I mean. And then we have, you know, we have 5 and 10, like you said. We have that huge disparity in this town. And there's every ilk in between. So it's really hard to pigeonhole, it's really hard to pigeonhole with one document, everything that's going on in town. So I don't, I don't even, I don't, I don't pretend to have the vision to do that. I mean, I could, I can sit here and pick it apart, and I don't, I don't have the stomach for that. But like I said, the application to the town is really difficult. I know that you, you mentioned you would love to have more pedestrian access. Of course, that only applies to certain areas of town.
And I'd say everywhere.
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I don't, I don't see where on 5 and 10 you would be walking from or to.
That's because the infrastructure isn't there, because we're not asking for it.
But from where, from, what are you, from where? I mean, what are you going to walk to? And, I mean, you're gonna-
I mean, there are a lot of people that do walk 5 and 10, maybe not.
Perhaps in the future, the idea is that there'd be more residential there, too, and that having sidewalks would create more of a walkable-
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I don't. However, having these, having this kind of wording, and then implementing it across the board, across town, you know, again, okay, maybe 5 and 10 wasn't the perfect example of that. But we get into anywhere else in town, and it's more widespread, and people aren't walking that far to get places.
Yeah, I-
And that's just, that's just one example.
Right, I appreciate, yeah, nearly, yeah, I appreciate what you're saying. And if I, if we limit it by, like, zoning area, for example, is the way we could tackle it, I don't want this document to then be, like, irrelevant then, or we'd have to update this document if and when we change our zoning to, like, and change the names of all of our districts or whatever, you know what I mean? And the fact that these are guidelines, again, there's nothing hard and fast. And we, like, whoever, whoever's on the board at the time, I guess, they could say, like, you know what, sidewalks are a thing, and we're going to, like, ask for people to put sidewalks here because our guidelines say it. Like, we're setting up, I think, not teeth, because they're not really teeth, baby teeth, I think.
Baby teeth.
Like, they're, it's like something that we can use and point to. I don't know, I feel comfortable with the way they are. I know they're not, we can't foresee every circumstance to see how these will play out, but I feel comfortable at least having a public comment, a public hearing next meeting to see what the public sentiments are on that.
And see if anybody even shows up.
It'll be cold.
I always go back to the hotel, too, in that when we had that application, we, there wasn't really grounds for us to make many comments on the design, because we didn't have this piece. But if we get this approved at town meeting, then we at least have something, and there's nothing stopping us from making changes, even just the next year, I think.
We have something to refer to.
Yeah. So we'll just have something in place, and then, I don't know how-
But if we're referring back to something that doesn't, that has, it's all shoulds and mights and coulds, and, you know, these aren't the kinds of things that we, as a board, you know, there was a complaint about that hotel looking like cinder block. I think that we, if we were a fluid board, could have caught that and corrected it as, as it was happening in front of us, and not, and not corrected it after, after public discussion came to us on it. You know, that's what I think the role of the planning board is, to be fluid and to adjust to situations as they come. And if that weren't, and if that warrants sidewalks, then let's do it. I'm all for it. You know, but I think that, I think that there's, there's numerous problems.
But if they had the guidelines to refer to from the get-go, though, then we might have not even needed to have them go back and update their-
Right, if Berkshire would have-
Right.
I mean, the wording is vague. I let my, I let my daughter, who is dabbling in architecture, go through this, and we don't want that, I can tell you, because she starts talking about color theory, and she starts talking about, so, I'm just, I'm just saying that it's, 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 I don't know, I don't know. Like I said, I don't have the vision to make it the perfect document.
I think my comment for it being vague and whether or not we could have caught it earlier about the aesthetic of the hotel, without the guidelines in place, it doesn't really matter that it doesn't meet what we want it to look like, because it, it meets the requirements in the bylaws. So it meets the requirements in the bylaws, then, without the design guidelines, we don't have much to say that, oh, well, we'd like you to make some changes to make it look more green, or more organic, or whatever we decide our language is. Because without it, it's hard to argue that we're not picking, like, making uneven requirements for applicants.
Somebody might say that we're being very arbitrary in the way we go about it, if we start doing that.
But I do agree with you, and I think a very common complaint about government is that they, they document papers that are, that don't have very strict guidelines, and it can be interpretive.
I'm not, and don't get me wrong, I'm not for, I'm not for a document that is, that gives builders a regimented way of doing business. I am against that. I am against, I am against asserting to people that they have to have themes and colors, and that they have to have a made-up style, vintage New England. I mean, what is that?
Right.
And we're talking about, we're talking about historic New England colors. Give me a color that wasn't in New England historically. I mean, what are we talking about? That, that's the kind of stuff that doesn't hold up when we start, when we start making suggestions, saying, oh, well, we're leaning on the handbook here. What, we're not, as a board, we don't have the power to suggest that you make your, your cinder block look better? I think we do. I think, yeah. Yeah.
Damn, you talk about historic colors. People back in, there were like baby blue houses and stuff back in the day.
Yes, yes, exactly, that's exactly what was in my mind.
But like, what people think of that is more like beige and grayish.
Right, right. Right, I mean, you know, what is garish, I guess, is the question.
Somebody might say that the, the house on Elm Street that the Neils lived in is garish, because it's purple. You know, who's to say? Whose opinion is real, and whose opinion counts?
Well, and that's when you'd have a public, that's when you'd have a public hearing, and you'd have the community say, the neighbors who actually have to look at that, saying, like, I wish it was more like this. And then we could be like, oh, because we have 23 pages of these design guidelines, that is, a version of that is in there, yes, we can request that. I don't know, I understand, it's a tricky thing to do. It's like, what, it's a tricky needle thread. I don't think we would ever have a perfect document, honestly. I mean, like, and I would like us to have, personally, would like us to have something, considering that they're in our guidelines.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. I don't. I think, I, I'm not disagreeing with, you know, with the premise of the document. Like, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the difficulty of getting it as a usable thing that we can, that we can lean on comfortably, I guess, would be.
I looked at, I think it was Belcher Towns or South Hadley's, I forget. And it's like, even, it's more intense than this one. It's like a slideshow of, like, what we do want, what we don't want. And it has, for each thing, what we do want, what we don't want.
Sounds like South Hadley or Belcher Town, but-
And it's, it seemed, in some ways, it was helpful to have the pictures and be very, very clear what we do and what we don't. But it was still, in the first slide, was like, this is all suggestion. So it's like, we don't want it to have too many, too, like, we don't want it to be too hard and fast to make it difficult for, for a developer, but we do want to have something. And I don't know what the happy medium is, but this was developed by professionals, and we are all by no means professionals.
When we were, when, when this was initially proposed, how did it, what was the, I mean, I, what, I hear, you know, you hear anecdotally what happened with this. I couldn't track down exactly. Did it go before the town? Did it go to the select board?
I don't, because there's no record of it going to town meeting, which is part of the problem. So I don't know what happened in 2014, if they, if they just didn't, like, make it in time to have it proposed, and then on 2015, it just fell through the cracks, or?
I think it's a little bit of politics of some sort that nobody is now, nobody knows, because that was not really that long ago, but that long ago in the memory of, institutional memory of the select board and the planning board.
So I have a question about this. We are way, 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 way behind on affordable housing in this town. So if we're looking to increase our affordable housing, don't you think that putting these kinds of restrictions on what those houses have to look like or might look like might suppress somebody from wanting to do that?
Or on the other hand, I wouldn't say the restrictions. To me, they're guidelines.
It's not saying you must do it this way. It's saying, for maximum chances of your plan's approval, here's some guidelines, right? It's not, these are the rules.
And like-
This is if you want to smooth your way through this process. You can't go wrong taking some hints from this page. And I don't think that it has any, it's going to crush the creativity of, you know, a world-renowned architect coming into Hatfield, because they know this is guidelines.
Right, like, if you said to, like, your hypothetical developer situation, if you had someone who was like, I want to, I can put it, I'm going to do this development, this whatever unit development, and there's no guidelines, I'm going to, I'm going to do a modern funky whatever take that are, like, completely out of, and plop it in this residential neighborhood that doesn't have that aesthetic, or whatever. And it gives them, it gives them direction and inspiration instead of, you know, that would, like you're saying, get us through the process in a way that, instead of having to waste resources going back and redoing it, if anything, it's like helpful on the develop, on any sort of person who's taking an initial stab at an architecture of a building.
Well, let's ask Doug, as the relatively new-to-town guy, what his thoughts are on, on the use of a document like that, and the, and the development of-
You actually have a spotlight in the room you want to put on me? That's, that's good.
No, I think, well, I think that you come with an area of expertise that can help, especially, especially as somebody with a new, with a new outlook.
So my experience with zoning is that it should be riding around 30,000 feet above the ground, that, you know, some of us were looking at a map. That's kind of where we should be looking. That being said, if you want to implement design guidelines as part of your zoning review, or zoning regulations for any given zone, or for the town as a whole, one of the things that might solve the problem, that you mentioned earlier about, you know, no one size fits all when it comes to the different areas of town, you might put into some regulations that are loosely worded as contextual, that, you know, new houses being considered or proposed should take on a quality and character similar to those around them. And that if you're proposing something slightly different, it's going to be a bigger challenge. The first thing that comes to mind is the newer, more modern-looking church on the Main Street right here. If somebody tried to propose that, or somebody tried to propose another flat-roof convenience store type, you know, structure on the Main Street. Right now, you have nothing, right? That would prevent that, other than site plan review, I think.
Public comment.
So having something in, in place that at least says, you know, structures should be designed to meet the similar height, facade, and character of other structures within this, within the same neighborhood. That gives you some protection.
For the most part.
Yeah, and it also gives you some variety.
Lean on, went to defend ourselves when somebody says, where do you get off saying, like, make this a big cinder block, right?
Right.
It's not hard and fast, but it gives us something. Yeah, yeah, no, I, I think that that's, I think that that's great. I think that it's just, it's semantics, but it's wording. You know, you're, you're not trying to apply, you know, some kind of a made-up standard, you know, vintage village something, I think is what they said. There's, there's no such thing. But what you said, if you can apply it to a neighborhood, then it gives you that, from above, you look at the neighborhood as a whole, and you can apply it to what's around it.
Right. So Dr. Posh's thing would have gotten shot down.
No, it's, but not for a resident. It's, uh, not, if you're a single-family resident, you can do whatever you want. This is more stuff that you need special permits for.
And if you do want to regulate single-family residences, you have to do it through a structure like a Historic Commission, where they actually have regulatory authority from the state to determine what houses should look like. I don't think, I know that Hatfield has a historic district, but you don't have regulations.
No, I think that might be something that comes out of a potential master plan, recommendations.
And that's something-
But it's nothing that we currently have.
That's off our table. That's not, yeah. But if you're talking about commercial or industrial structures, then, yeah, I wholeheartedly endorse the idea that the planning board has the ability, through the special permit process, to regulate what the building looks like. And if it has the appearance of a giant monolith, and other structures around it aren't comparable, or they can't show a structure that has a similar look or feel, then I think you have an argument to make that it's out of keeping with similar structures.
This gives us a jumping-off point for that conversation.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And I would say, like, some of the structures that we do currently, like, I'm trying to think in a more commercial area, where there already are some, like, pretty metal box structures. If you kept it as, like, the character of the neighborhood, do we want more of those metal box structures? Or do we want more of the, what's outlined in the guidelines, too?
Do you want a metal box structure that looks like my longtime family friends, the Ruthiers? Or do you want a metal box structure that looks like RK Miles? Both the same type of architecture, the same exterior materials, both arranged in very, very, very different ways.
Yeah, and we didn't have those guidelines together for RK Miles, but RK Miles was very much willing to work with that, work with the vision that that planning board had at the time.
Yeah.
Which I'm sure if we had, maybe if we had guidelines, there wouldn't have been so much back and forth needed to get to that point. I don't know. It's, yeah, it's hard when you start, like, getting down on the ground, like you're kind of saying, like, thinking about all the potential scenarios for it. It's more of the spirit of what we're doing.
And I apologize to anybody, I haven't read these yet. I'd really like to read the document.
You'll love, you'll love them. You'll tear right through them.
Page-turner?
Who prepared this document?
This was the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and the board at the time, in 2013-ish. So.
Oh, it's a document from 2013?
Mm-hmm, that never got passed.
Oh.
And we read it, and-
And we don't have it to lean on, or anything we could get to lean on, when people are saying, why are you telling me to change it? It's also, it's also stealing stuff from like Salem, Mass.
Yeah, like it mentions.
Salem has a terrible history for preserving their history.
And a terrible history.
Yeah.
Um, so with that, I we've had a very spirited conversation, but thinking about next steps. What does that mean for us? Do we first question based on, do we still want to go forward recommending design guidelines at town meeting? I for one say yes.
I like it as well. If it's just to give us some teeth to say we want sidewalks with this project.
May I ask about the timeline?
Yes. So in order for us, so we can, we generally you need to know like if we're going to have a town warrant article like February-ish.
Okay.
And it doesn't, the wording doesn't need to be 100%, but we need to know like what it is. But the wording needs to be like in, I'm trying to remember what happened last year around. I like I'm being safe too and cautious. We need to have the wording in by our March meeting so that the town attorney can like review everything.
Sure.
So in order for that to happen, we need to have a hearing on it probably next.
That would be January.
January ideally so that then we can work, like if there's any feedback that comes out of it, we can work wordsmith it and workshop it in between to then have us all review and propose something for February to vote on putting on the town meeting warrant.
That makes the most sense. I mean, we're going to have to go through a public meeting anyways.
I mean, unless, you know.
Theoretically, we have to.
Unless we want to strip it all down and go back to the drawing board and say the hell with it for this year, which I don't know if that's where you're at.
With proposed with Doug's proposed.
I don't have the energy for that. I mean, I don't, yeah. See, that's that's the problem. That's why I don't want to get all worked up about it.
That's the thing.
I don't have the energy to rewrite.
Do you want to start?
Do you want to start the process?
Doug to rewrite it before February.
Do you want to start redpanning it line by line and doing your line item veto? Because we can do that. We can throw this into Google Docs or someplace where, you know, I could track changes. You could propose changes. You could just propose deletions, rip this whole page out, rip this paragraph out, you know, we can have that discussion.
Simplify it and do that. But I was like, it's too much.
If you don't want to put it online and you're okay sharing that with me if you have notes on it, I can go through it.
Okay, cool.
And I like Doug's suggestion too. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to, I know that I know the way this town works. You put something out there and they're going to try to find every way they can to pick it apart.
Sometimes.
So maybe we do that first.
That's what I'm saying. That's kind of why I'm picking at it.
Between now and January.
No, fair enough.
Yeah.
Um, I would be happy to work with with you and and look at that and yeah.
I'll give, I'll give you the notes that I have. I mean, like little things like.
Is it going right now?
Yeah, the way, the way that.
It was in our packet last time.
For instance.
When I.
But we have it in Word Doc.
One person's, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
I was gonna say, when I hosted my workshop, there's a very active people on Facebook on like the town's Facebook page. I could create a survey and post these and say, like, and I genuinely think we'd get feedback from people, which would get us ahead of it.
They're giving a timeline feedback too.
I mean, we are a board of people.
Bunch of comments.
May I ask for review of, time to review it first?
Before we do that?
Yeah, if if, speaking from experience, if you put something out there that's a rough draft that that suddenly a lot of people don't like, that may color how they see your final draft, even if your final draft is is fixing all the problems with the first one, they may still throw it out as a rejection. So I'd be concerned about putting something out there that you know you're going to change anyways that that.
I'm also curious how this, how some, how a survey would intersect with a public hearing, so.
I think because there's a requirement to have the public hearing, but I don't see why.
We could still solicit informal feedback, correct?
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Yeah, the public hearing is just a requirement of MGL.
Right, and I'm thinking like, would we put that in that feedback when, yeah, I'm just thinking out loud, sorry. People could submit written feedback on them too, but that's like separate if it was for the public hearing.
So we could think of that.
Well, yeah, no, if that's if that's the case, I'd be more than happy to. I mean, like I said, I was I was reticent to go through and fine pick this thing without a solution because that's not how I like to do.
That's kind of how I felt when I first initially sat down with us a few months ago and I was like, I want to try to streamline this. And then you're just like, this is a lot. And I'm not an expert, right?
I think, you know, I think that Doug has a really good point with if we can maybe find, find, fine polish through ourselves as a board, you would think collectively, we would be able to come up with a lot of the issues.
Preface it with, you know, his addition, which is that it's keep this neighborhood contextual, you know what I mean?
I like that a lot.
That is gonna pop out a lot of the original objections from people who have development on their mind.
And if we could, and ideally I would like it like seven pages at the most, you know what I mean?
Simplification is obviously something.
But when you do that, you lose some of like the, like when if you, there's like a lot of things that I wouldn't necessarily think of that are in there. Like, oh, something like shopping cart, no, you know, or like there's certain things in there that I'm like, oh, I wouldn't have thought of that for the design guidelines.
And also there are a lot of. Sorry.
Yeah.
There are a lot of really, really good points in here too. I don't want to just sit and completely detract from it. I mean, it there, but there's just there are flaws.
Okay, so next step. Doug and Lee are gonna put together a draft.
Did that just happen? I would be, can you put the document online? Can we create a Google Doc?
Yep. For like redlining.
Can you share it with the two of us?
And you can do like, we can do track changes, not draft, but more.
This is an edit, this is an edit proposed by Lee, this is an edit proposed by.
The pen. I can barely operate my phone.
We can do that.
I'd be happy to catch up with you in person offline sometime and we can compare notes.
And then when you have that, hopefully that'll can be done in the next before the.
Two weeks.
Yeah, so that we can review that so that, you know.
January, then we give it to the public for comment.
Is that, does that feel good?
The last, but we're up against it now. We gotta get this squared away where we can all agree on it by January.
I don't, and I don't see this as a Doug and me project. I think that everyone has their own individual concerns.
The whole thing is two people working on it at a time for open meeting law.
I understand, yes.
Well, yeah, so I mean, if it's online, I could do it my best.
Right, so where would it be online?
I can, does everyone have a Gmail account? Is that?
Or you can make a Google account with any email address. You don't have to have a Gmail address.
Okay.
You just have to have a Google account.
Yeah.
Well, the other, the other thing we can do is is we can dig into it, make some changes, you know, do some tweaks and then send versions out to everybody as a standard PDF.
Yeah, we just can't discuss any of the stuff.
Can't discuss it.
Yeah.
Only two.
Um, yeah. So that's kind of why that's that suggestion for now.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Cool. And I still think, did you say so putting it at February? Because I think we can still do it for January.
The hearing or the?
Be a public hearing, right? Or January will be, we've all agreed on it. We like it. We want to float it. It's got to be announced and then people come in and can comment. And then February, we can give it the thumbs up for it. Then it can make the main meeting.
Yeah, so still hold a public hearing on the document.
In February?
In January.
In January. This is why we're up against it now because we got a holiday coming up.
Yep.
And now we got, you know, a week's worth of work to grant before that.
Okay. I wasn't really planning on doing anything over the next month, no problem.
Nobody was, right?
I don't think it's that hard. I don't think it's that hard. I think there are objectionable things that are just picky un and I absolutely take Lee's point. But I think for the most part, it's pushing for good stuff. And it's all like, yeah, it's just a guideline. It's all really like, they can go against it case by case.
The only concern I, yes, I would love to do this in January. The only concern I have is if there's a lot of changes, for example.
That's the problem.
Then we probably wouldn't be, I don't know if we would be ready, we could be ready for January, but if it's like the five or six bullet points that you're tweaking.
I guess my question, I guess my question is why are we scrambling then?
We haven't been, honestly, if, I mean, I thought between the last meeting and this meeting, I thought you two were supposed to connect on some of the issues that you had in there.
Oh, yeah? Sorry.
No, that.
So I, it's just like the same conversation we're having meeting after meeting. And so we, when we initially had this conversation, it was set up like months ago so that we wouldn't be scrambling.
We put deadlines up to procrastinators. They have a deadline and then they have to run.
Brad school, I know.
Well, we also haven't had a five member board to sit down and talk like this.
If if I may, going back to the timeline, March is kind of a drop dead deadline for getting final language for warrant article.
Got to go to the woods.
Okay, so the warrant article can be something, it it just needs to describe the scope of what town meeting is going to consider to see if town meeting will vote to adopt a guide, design guidelines for commercial and industrial projects in Hatfield as proposed by the planning board and made available through the town clerk.
Right.
It can be that simple. That's the scope of the warrant article. The guidelines need to be ready to go as soon as the warrant is published, preferably three to four weeks before town meeting and probably by the, you know, definitely by the time we have the public hearing. So people know what we're talking about and they can offer comment. If we have a public hearing in February, we can still make the the rest of that timeline. That gives us January to sort of wordsmith the thing, pull it apart, put it back together and bring it before this board for an open discussion.
Yep. That's fine.
So we vote February.
We have the hearing.
March.
No.
You would vote in February to receive public comment? Yeah, I mean, the first meeting and the first Wednesday in March for a meeting, right?
Yeah, so, yeah.
That's too late.
If nobody comes, we could vote yes on February and be fine. But if there's a lot of people who come here and we need to wordsmith it, we still have March up to March to figure it out. That's fine. I've, yep.
First meeting in January, looks like it's about the third.
Yes.
Maybe, and then first meeting in February, it looks like it's the first, or is that my reading it wrong?
Either way, the first Wednesday in February. All right.
Yeah, you're right.
February 7th, it looks like, according to Fashion.
Okay.
Okay. And. So we're feeling good with the next steps then. So Doug and Lee are going to be the ones that are going to be talking about it. The rest of us can send in other edits that we see fit to talk about.
You can make it available electronically.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. And we'll, with the anticipation of us coming back to talk about it in January to have a final draft for a February public hearing. All right.
Lee, you're not diametrically opposed to design guidelines, yes?
I am not.
Okay, I just wanted that down for the record.
I am not. It's not a diabolical plan.
I like. I like your concerns. Your concerns are.
It would be the long game, wouldn't it? It would have been the long game though, wouldn't it?
Oh, whoops, what do you know? It's past our deadline. Okay. Next agenda item, open space development bylaw, the other update that we want to put on town meeting warrant agenda. So we are all facing a similar deadline. And historical background for newest member and for the public yet again. We have an open space development bylaw on the books. It is not by right, and that's like the main difference is we want it to be by right.
Okay.
Because right now they have to like, basically there's extra hoops for them, the public to jump through right now in order to.
Can't be though.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Is it a bylaw or a zoning bylaw?
Sorry, I was thinking de facto is what I was, it's open space development bylaw is a zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Are you familiar with that, with what that, what it is?
No.
So in essence, it's like cluster development. So if someone were to come in and instead of doing a traditional subdivision, they wanted to do an open space development bylaw, they could do the same number of units that would be allowed or parcels that would be allowed in a traditional subdivision. But the way that our bylaw reads is they can do that condensed on 50% of the parcel and the other 50% we preserve in perpetuity.
Which means they get lot sizes forgiven, they can have greater density, possibly multiple units attached, frontage is forgiven.
Correct.
Yeah.
And we've had.
But it's a special permit.
Special permit.
Fair enough.
And right now we like want to allow it with, like basically make it easier. Make it easier. So we are incentivizing that development potentially over a traditional subdivision.
Understood.
We've had a version of this on the books since the last, it was an outcome of the last master plan to post one of these and and we've only had one development.
Okay.
Use it, but yes. So we were trying to find, it was something that we were working on the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission with to pass at our 2019 or 20, 20, 2019 annual town meeting. It was just about, it was still on the warrant article and then the last minute town council pulled it because of one of the provisions about open space that's on there, the way that it was written. So basically the Pioneer Planning Committee, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission didn't see this when, you know, obviously we didn't see this because we are citizens on a planning board. And the book got pulled up last minute. And so as the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission felt poorly sad about, you know, felt bad about it, wanted to update their model bylaw, used Hatfield and East Hampton as test cases for updating their open space development bylaw like over the last two years. Finally, last December came out with their updated bylaw stuff. And so now we're taking that and going forward. And with that, there are not too many, there's just like slight, I mean, like what is the substantial changes to the what we're looking at?
Really, there's not much else that we can do. We can't, we can make suggestions that we want prime farmland and open space developments to be like operated as farmland. We can't request that it is formally. We can increase it from 40 to 50, which was one of the suggestions. So the amount of the lot that's preserved as open space in perpetuity. Right now it's at 40, but we wanted to increase it to 50%.
Those are like the main, those are like the main differences.
And getting rid of the minimum lot sizes.
So that they, the lot sizes would really just be dictated by setbacks and if they're receptive, if the needs were receptive.
And then we were talking earlier the, at the conference that Steph and I went to this weekend, I asked, because I've been trying to search for ways to limit regular subdivisions and and make this more favorable to developers. And one suggestion that someone, I think it was the Pioneer Valley, actually Pioneer Valley Planning Commission was requiring each developer when making an applicant, submitting an application to submit both a regular, sorry, subdivision application and a open space subdivision application to maybe dissuade regular subdivisions.
So you would say like an applicant, let's say someone's like, I want to develop a traditional subdivision for your typical cul-de-sac on your one acre lots because it's around, that's around what we require. We, it would, it would be asking the applicant to also submit an open space development bylaw rendering of the same parcel.
Yep, just, just for fun. And so the idea is that the only people who would like.
Force them to.
That sounds expensive.
Force them to plan it, yeah.
So the idea is that the only developers who would go about doing that would want to like.
It would probably look at this and be like, oh, it's cheaper, more than likely than not cheaper to do this open space development bylaw, development.
I guess, like to me, the idea is that it would be someone who's already looking to do that because why pay the money to make a plan for something that you're not going to do? That being said, it's like the, I think the argument against that is if we're facing a housing crisis and we just want houses built, is that going to dissuade people from doing that? But I think if if that is something that people are interested in, then we can add language that says if it's not suitable for an open space subdivision because there's not enough acre like area in the lot to do that, then you can request a waiver from the board for submitting both plans. But the guy at the conference wasn't exactly supportive of it.
Yeah.
Was or was not?
He was not.
Supportive of the idea of a dual making, making a secondary application, okay?
Yeah, well, it it seems to me.
Said you could do it, but I, that was kind of.
It seems to me it's also going to cost somebody a lot of extra money to make up two plans with an architect or landscape architect when maybe that could be a second, i- if they propose a subdivision and it doesn't fly, then maybe they could come back with that and say.
The problem is a standard subdivision, we can't not fly a subdivision.
Right, we need to put teeth to open.
No, actually you can say no.
Well, with some certain, right.
You, if you have criteria in your subdivision rules and regs that says that you can point the finger at, then yes. And it doesn't need to be comprehensive or overwhelming. It can be just one thing.
Well, so that was one of the other things is because like other things we could put in the sub, updating our subdivision bylaws to make them be like less attractive than open space.
So that's actually interesting to me because I don't understand why we couldn't do de facto then if we could just include in the subdivision regulations, if it's not preserving open space, then we're not going to approve it.
Or we make it more tricky.
Yeah.
More difficult.
If. Yes, I can envision in your subdivision rules, something which says that if the development proposes to convert traditional or historical farmland into a neighborhood, then and the area is over a certain amount, then a certain percentage of the entire lot has to be preserved as farmland.
Then we demand you fill out an application for an open space.
Well, yeah, yeah, you, in the case of an open space subdivision, that requirement isn't necessarily there.
Tiny or, yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's possible.
That's closer, that's easier. I would just imagine floating that by the town. It's more, more reasonable.
Because, yeah, that's like, so the whole thing is like, we're gonna, we want to pass, update our open space development. Because, yeah, that's like, so the whole thing is like, we're going to, we want to pass, update our open space development bylaw with these tweaks. They're mostly tweaks. And do we then also, at the same time, update our subdivision bylaws with these extra things? Or are they onerous enough, or...
The good news about the subdivision rules and regulations is that they are that. They're binding, there's a different process of adoption, they don't have to go to town meeting. Adopt them after a public hearing, you can do it here.
So, what we need to do, you know, in the big picture is popularize. And we want to guide people towards that.
Right.
We don't want to crush a new developer who's going to bring housing in, but we do want to push them towards, considering at least this.
Yeah, the other thing with the open space, the updates, is that you would get bonuses if you made them, made one like affordable, or made, had some affordability in at least, yeah.
Just a clarifying question, though, so we, to make the changes to the regular subdivision guidelines, we wouldn't have to go to town meeting, but for the open space subdivision, I think we'd still have to.
Yeah, that's a zoning bylaw, that needs some improvement.
I didn't realize that with the subdivision.
So, do we remember what particularly, what point shot it down? You said there was legal problems with the open space, what was the technical issue?
The big thing was making it de facto, so essentially saying, any subdivision that's over three units, you have to use this, that one...
That wasn't the reason why, that wasn't in the original thing, and that's not why it was shot down.
The, that was in the 2019 one.
What was it? Okay.
That one, and then it was with that, all these requirements for...
That runs contrary to anyone...
Where is it?
It was something about open space and requiring public access to the open space.
Yep.
Because if you had farmland, you would...
You can't require...
Yeah, people would say, well, it's a park now, because it's preserved openly, and now it's not. It's private property. You don't have the right to fly your pet on it.
I think there's a huge misconception about either public, that protected land means I can do anything I want on it.
This is preserved by Hatfield, right, I'm locking my dog here.
Right.
Nope.
So, that was the thing that...
Do we have to keep that in mind?
Which we can still keep it and say, like, we would request that you preserve, it would be our preference that you preserve view sheds and...
Yeah.
X, Y, Z, I can't find it right now, but...
The language was like hard, like, there was no squishiness.
You have to versus, yeah. Something like, something like that, if somebody's proposing an open space development, let's say, converting 24 acres just off a strait's road that used to be, they have frontage on West Street as well, let's say they want to turn that into a subdivision, and an open space subdivision is the way they're going. Well, then, maybe it makes sense to ask that they put an APR, or put a conservation restriction on the part that's going to remain in farmland. So, it permanently remains in farmland.
That's what it is, it's a permanent, the other half is permanently protected.
Okay, so fair enough, all right.
And what a lot of communities think of an open space development bylaw like that, and it ends up being like a park, or a meadow, or whatever, and like, it's owned by like a condo association of the, whatever. What we want to, like, point them to is, you could then sell that land to a farmer, because it's going to be affordable, because there's a restriction on it.
Sure.
And we want to like, I think that's the language, is encourage that, which is like not, maybe not a forefront in working for every community that has an open space development bylaw, but it's relevant to Hatfield.
So, not necessarily requiring the owner of the subdivision to maintain ownership of that, but just requiring the restriction.
Correct.
That'd be preserved, right, your project goes, this is preserved.
Yeah, and the farmer who owns the adjacent property farms it, but everybody's happy.
Everybody's happy, that's the hope.
So, those, that's our update, now to timeline, how are we feeling about this?
For that, I don't think there's a lot, like, I feel like we're more of a, in agreement on the open space development bylaws than design, like, I think there's still work to do for design guidelines.
Yeah, because there's already like a 90% version of what we, is what we've already have passed in on our books.
There's also just a lot more rules for this one, we can't do a lot of things. So, I want to ask town council about this idea, if like, a lot is above a certain percentage for prime farmland, making this note that says you have to then submit an open space subdivision plan as well.
But that is not necessarily relevant...
To the bylaw.
To the bylaws that we would need to do a public hearing for in order to get in the town meeting warrant.
No, so, like, I guess, I still want, like, I'm interested in that one, but other than that, I don't see the open space subdivision bylaw changing very much at all.
And will, do you mind sending a draft to everyone? The most updated thing, updated?
I can do that tomorrow, so tomorrow, I will send out design guidelines and the open space development.
So, do you feel like we could at least do that hearing in January, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, if everyone gets a chance to read the draft, because then we'll have the hearing, and there can be public feedback, and then any other commentary or things we might want to tweak or change.
Let me try to find Doug's suggestion of internal zoning changes.
To the rules and regulations.
To the subdivision rules and regulations.
So, we want to talk about that type of language.
But there isn't like a hard, yeah, I think we should talk about that soon.
That doesn't need review to May, this isn't something we got to like steamroll quick, because we can do it ourselves. We have time.
If memory serves, the process for that is, we still hold a public hearing to offer public comment, we vote to adopt it, and then it gets recorded at the registry of deeds. That's it, yeah.
And just verifying that process.
In regard to your question, though, through you, to our assistant, the question of requiring the secondary plan or the cluster subdivision, I would be interested in council's opinion on whether, if a traditional subdivision is proposed, and in the planning board's estimation, a cluster subdivision would better serve the town. Whether that would, whether that could be a mark against the applicant, or whether we could put it in our rules that says that would be less desirable. If you're trying to develop an entire piece of land, and where a cluster subdivision could be developed with the same number of units.
That's the rub, what's the trigger?
What do you mean, the number?
What is...
Yeah, we, in our open space, say, if you're allowed three or more, we prefer open space. You're putting three or more lots.
Yeah, but prefer is like the design guideline. See, we don't want you to make it purple house, like, well, make it a purple house, okay, right? Prefer is prefer.
Right.
I prefer it a little more peppered.
And so, that's why we would need to look at what we can do with the subdivision by, with what we...
Right, and it would be like, under the intention section, I think, you know? It's our intention to preserve as much open space as possible, while still allowing for, you know, reasonable residential development.
Like, for an example that someone brought up, there, maybe it's Northampton's, or, but like, their subdivision bylaws, you need to be LEED certified if you're going to be putting in, like, those are like LEED certified, so like, soup, like, energy efficient criteria, net zero, which is expensive, and so, like, that's an example of something that they put in there to encourage alternatives to a subdivision. So, like, think like that. Okay, so I feel less, I feel more confident moving ahead with a open space development bylaw update, knowing it wants upon confirmation, if Doug's correct, I'm not saying you're not correct, Doug.
No, I could be, I could be incorrect.
If we don't have to do the subdivision bylaws also with town meeting.
Confirm that process, yeah.
If you confirm that process, that would be helpful.
Okay, yep.
I mean, it could just be a Google search, really.
Exactly, it actually works after town meeting.
Right, I feel like we should definitely prioritize it like this fiscal year, hopefully, but like, it doesn't need to be on the same timeline.
Doesn't have to go from May.
Yeah.
If we confirm.
Yes. And if we confirm that we do have to pass it at town meeting, I do think we should try and pass both of them at the same time. Because I think that's more politically feasible to say, we're doing this because of this, instead of like, next year, pulling around the subdivision guidelines and people being like, you're restricting my ability to develop, or whatever.
Yeah.
And there are some pieces to be developed in this town still.
I mean, we do, we need housing, there's no doubt, and honestly, on smaller lots, I personally am all for that. The fact that we have one acre lots to build a house on, I think, is the reason why we don't have affordable housing. Affordable meaning.
I want to see the trending in your documents. I want to see those all tied digitally, mapped on top of each other, because there are some strong tendencies.
I think another thing happens in this town is that no one builds spec houses.
What does that, what does that mean?
That means you build a house and hope that you sell it.
No, yeah.
No one builds spec houses, people build, have houses built for them in this town. So, that, I mean, that really leads, helps lead to the restrictions that we're seeing in what gets developed and what gets built. I mean, everybody's got the right to build their own house.
Big houses, big lots.
Does anybody build spec houses anymore?
I don't know.
It costs so much to build, I can't imagine that...
And then the land, and then, yes, that's why...
There are developers that have big parcels that are going to build 300 houses that can afford to do that.
And a lot of those, it's because they're on smaller lot sizes. I don't think that could ever be feasible with our current lot size now.
But that's why the Hatfield design thing of allowing, and the open space thing, allowing more houses to come in of varying shapes and sizes that do fit into the neighborhood, would be something that we should be promoting as opposed to trying to restrict.
Yeah, and I think you'll see that as like a big thing, coming from the comprehensive plan, updated master plan.
We are in the soup, and I don't mean the good soup. We are in the soup as far as affordable housing goes.
Yes, we are.
In this state.
Yep, we are. Any other comments on the open space development bylaw? We, yeah, Janelle, you'll send that out, and look at the subdivision, updating that process. All right, any other updates from you, Janelle? You held a housing workshop?
I had, I had a housing workshop. John was just talking about wanting to see the results.
It was cool, it was really cool.
Also want to see the results. I just wrapped up today, I did my studio semester for, as my master's program this past fall, and today, we presented our priority climate action plan to our clients, the SCR Cog in Connecticut, and I feel like now, I can... Like, very...
Big presentation, a lot of work.
Can you describe just like what your, the housing thing was, just for...
Yeah, so, for my thesis project, I'm looking at using exploratory scenario planning to think about trade-offs people might make in more rural areas to increase the housing stock. So, what I did for this part of my research is, we hosted a workshop night at Town Hall, and people were given different squares, paper squares, that represented different types of buildings, and were basically told, put these all on the map and like justify your reasoning for...
Argue it amongst yourselves.
Yeah, argue it about amongst yourselves, people were given roll cards, they weren't necessarily using their personal opinions to play the game.
I was a farmer, and I hated big developments. I just wanted to see open space preserved in pro-farming stuff.
And, yeah, so we've got some maps now to look at. The next steps for me are going to be making some different zoning maps, independent of my work here, but just as a grad student, really, thinking about how the zoning map in Hatfield could look different, like, based off of what people drew at the workshop, and then, from there, there'll be an opportunity for people to provide comment on that, and say what they like and don't like about the maps, and, yeah, I'm pretty excited. There's a lot of opinions.
It was intriguing, because I went, when we were done, I went from table to table, and I saw that a lot of people had kind of done the same thing. You know, and it, there was a lot of knowledge in the room, there was a lot of people with a lot of years.
There was some good participation, I thought.
Yeah.
It was, it was really cool. I mean, I could foresee it as an actual planning mechanism in the future, just to get a bunch of public comment, quick, you know?
And it's...
It translates to data, like, you got your maps, and this is what people, how the town is feeling, or at least the people that are interested enough. And, I don't know, it could be really useful, I'd like to see the plan ourselves.
And what I'm excited about in both of my roles is, there seemed to be some discussion about it afterwards, too, and like, it's sparked, I mean, already, the activities for the comp plan has been getting people more involved, I think, but with this, too, and thinking about housing, people who want more information or future events to come to, which I don't have in the works right now, but...
I do, which is perfect segue.
Yeah.
If I may.
Yes, please.
So, the comprehensive plan committee, the, there's a set of consultants that are working on developing the plan, so it's not just like, you know, Joe Schmo, Hatfield resident, developing this comprehensive plan, it's like someone who's doing research and doing, and is looking at best practices. And with that, one of the items that these consultants are supposed to do, they're supposed to meet with boards and committees to talk about some of the recommend, the potential recommendations. There are also going to be like hearings to the public that they're invited to after that, but first, they want to like run by some of their recommendations to boards and committees. So, I apologize, it's not on the agenda, but this just came up yesterday, so that's, the consultants reached out looking to talk to specifically the planning board, mostly because almost all the recommendations have to do with zoning, as you can imagine. Some don't, but like, the bulk of them, as most master plans, a lot of it falls on the planning board to carry through. They, I told them about our meeting in February, because it's an already, they want to meet at the end of January. I told them about our regularly scheduled meeting for February. The only concern I'd have is that if there are lots of other things on our agenda, it could be very long, which is, so that, either that option, or there's the option of having it like the week before on January 31st, that's just catered to comprehensive plan stuff, and then we would still have our regularly scheduled meeting at the following week. And if we were, either way, we would be also inviting other town boards and committees to come to our meeting, but we would be the conveners, because we would have a quorum, and we would be giving opinions and thought and discussion about any potential zoning, like, recommendations pertaining to zoning and other planning board purview in, at that meeting. Does that make sense?
If you're planning on inviting other boards and committees, the 31st makes sense, because it's the fifth Wednesday of the month, so it's unlikely that you're going to run into conflict with other board or committee meetings.
Interesting point.
Just a thought.
I'm trying to get the most...
The CPC is a weird board, let me tell you.
Do you guys have, is it the last Wednesday of the month?
It's usually the Wednesday before this meeting, so I, you may be right, but they're, you know, they conflict it often.
Okay.
That would be my only, my only hangup with it.
The first Wednesday after the full moon, something like that.
Yeah, after spring begins.
I would not be able to attend the 31st meeting.
Okay.
If it was a different time, I would be interested in attending, but I will not be here.
Yeah, does anyone have strong thoughts or feelings on doing it during a regular meeting, or having, like, for one long potential meeting, or two semi-regular length meetings?
I'm okay with a long block, if it accommodates people's schedules.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
I could also participate virtually, if it's a go-to meeting for that, I could.
I don't, yeah, I'm not quite sure what they have in mind.
If it makes more sense to have it on the regular meeting night, that's fine with me.
I think a regular meeting is fine, too.
Okay, you were, then we're committed to doing a potentially long meeting, if we have other special permits pop in, or we're going to be doing this hearing on the open space development bylaw.
We, and we will know by January, right, if there's special permits on the forefront, right?
Yeah, ideally, well, yeah, we would know two weeks ahead of, we would know two, we would have to know two weeks ahead of time, so we know in like a couple of weeks whether we would have extra stuff coming.
Which we could.
Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the February, sorry, it's the February meeting, I'm a month ahead of myself.
No, sure.
You're right, we would know in the middle of January, if there's anything on the horizon. And we know that there are things coming, I'm just like waiting, there's like at least three or four things that will be coming, I just don't know what month they're going to land on, so that's my only hesitation, is that it could just be a very, very long meeting. Sorry, John.
Don't worry.
I will go back to them and suggest our regularly scheduled meeting then. All right. Cool. With that, that is all the, that's my unanticipated agenda item.
Did you review minutes, or did you have that on your agenda?
Yep, that's the next...
Oh, very good.
Next piece, unless there are any other updates from Janelle.
No.
All right.
Minutes look great.
Yeah.
He was here, he's had...
The special occasion Easter glasses. The special occasion Easter glasses.
Like that, like punctuation, right?
All right. Any updates, everybody get a chance to read these? Any comments? The only thing is, I'd like, it references Mike Poschek in the select board meeting minutes and his last name is spelt wrong incorrectly.
I didn't write it, by the way.
Other than that, yeah. There's like a Z in there somewhere.
It's captured here on the record.
And make a motion, we accept the minutes as produced?
Second app.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Approved. November first meeting minutes approved. And next scheduled meeting is January third, oh, it says twenty twenty-three, it's twenty twenty-four. Hope that doesn't mess-
It's here in the minutes.
And with that, a motion to adjourn our meeting?
And make a motion, we adjourn this meeting?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Meeting is adjourned at seven twelve.